Okay, welcome to the floor. Vice President April.
Let's read this through the flag of the United States of America and the two republics for which stands one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good to hear your comments. Howard, Doyle, Gilbert, me, Olin, Youssef Akrumson, and Vessel, here. Okay, we start with our favorite topic, District 207 Best. This month, we're doing career exploration. Before we start with our students from each school, I'd like to recognize Dr. Laura Cook, who's been, can you stand up? She's been our director of the program since its inception almost 10 years ago. So, we're so thankful that you're here to join us and to celebrate our students.
Definitely the students.
Yes. Okay, we're going to start with Main South, Ben.
Great. This month, Main South is pleased to present Athena DiMaris. Why don't you come up right here for career exploration? So, I'm going to walk you through all of the things that Athena has done for the past four years. When she came into high school, she knew she wanted to be a doctor. Well, you thought you pretty much wanted to be a doctor. I'll get to that in a second. And so, March of her freshman year, she visited the Career Center and met with Ms. Wilkins, our career coordinator, and then signed up for the Body Insight Program during the summer where she could learn about different parts of the body. She got to dissect different animal organs, which she felt was really cool. Junior year then, after taking a lot of different science classes, junior year, she attended the Farm Academy Camp where she learned about the different aspects of pharmacy and learned about the lab and how to interact with health patients. And that also bridged with her internship to be a pharmacy technician during her junior year at Walgreens. She also took anatomy and healthcare careers, you know, continuing on during the school year with this theme. Second semester, she took the suburban pediatrics internship and got to shadow doctors and ultimately realized that she wanted to be an outpatient worker and that exclusively at a hospital. So, she got to narrow things down as she went through high school. And then that summer, she attended the medical camp at Bowling Green during the months of July, had a great time there, continuing to just love what she was doing. But she wasn't 1,000% sold that she wanted to be a doctor yet. So, she decided, well, what the heck? This year, I'll take an internship at the Strategic Coach. It's, excuse me, it's called Strategic Coach. It's a business leadership consulting firm, just to make sure I don't want to go into business consulting too. So, lo and behold, she's decided that nope, she really wants to go into the medicine field. I'll let her explain that in a moment. But she also has just a really extraordinary track record across the school doing a lot of different things. She's a flute section leader in the band. She's the vice president of HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America, Hawk Pride Leader. She's in NHS, Science NHS, varsity tennis. She's a tutor in her math and science lab. She's in medical careers club. She's in Greek club. And she's a writer for Southwood's. So, she does everything. I was asking her, like, what about medicine in particular? What about being a doctor do you want? And she said, when she took AP Biology last year, she just really fell in love with the way the body works. And it became her desire to kind of go into that. In particular, she told a story during her internship where she was working and shadowing a doctor, and a student came in, a young boy, who was having issues with his hormones. And he was referred to an endocrinologist. And that story just really struck with her and about what that endocrinologist was able to do and to how to help that child grow. And so, it's one of the reasons why she possibly wants to go into endocrinology, but she'll make a decision on that soon. All right? So, now I'm going to read some of the extraordinary quotes from some of the people that get to work with you, Athena. Tim Spiegel, your counselor, says, "I believe what makes Athena so distinctly distinctive is her innate ability to lead. Through her writing and personal conversations, she revealed how her credits, she revealed how she credits her mother in modeling these attributes of true influence in the various settings she was involved in. I'd have to conclude that Athena's selflessness, determination she developed during her high school years will ultimately continue into her post-high school experience. It is the relationship between resoluteness and diligence that truly separates Athena from her peers." Athena's medical terminology teacher, Heather Sinnet, says, "For the past two years, Athena has led HOSA future health professionals officer positions. Last year, she was the secretary, and this year, she is serving as our vice president. She has been a huge help to me and has really become a leader. Athena is passionate about pursuing a career in the healthcare field. Currently, she is a student in my medical terminology class. Athena is such a mature, hardworking, and responsible student. In fact, she was recently my student of the month." David Hutter, Athena's wind ensemble and band teacher, says, "Athena has been a four-year flute player in the Main South marching band, concert band, symphonic band, and even our top wind ensemble her senior year. In addition, she was the flute section leader in the marching band as well as part of the uniform crew in marching band. She is always 100% reliable, trustworthy, and organized. Younger students look up to Athena both musically and personally due to her leadership. Even during e-learning, Athena was, always had her camera on and was actively engaged." I will say this too, the number one undergrad major into pre-med is music, so just wanted to put you to finish. And then Laura Wilkins, the Main South career coordinator, and Katie Schroeder, the Main South internship coordinator, says, "Athena has always been eager for opportunities. She takes initiative to participate in career exploration whenever possible. She has a consistently positive attitude and a naturally inquisitive nature. She knew early that she would like to be a doctor. Athena has taken steps each semester of high school to work toward that goal. This semester, Athena had a paid internship, working 10 hours a week with her strategic coach, which provides business consulting for entrepreneurs. Of course, in addition to a very rigorous course load, Athena has also taken healthcare careers, medical terminology, and anatomy and physiology." So, Athena, if I'm going to have a doctor, you're the person that I want to be because you're such an awesome, awesome, awesome person. And clearly, across all of these things that you're doing at Main South, we know that you're going to do awesome things for other people coming up and everything else that you have here. So, please tell us who's with you here this evening.
My parents are with me, my sister, both of my grandparents, and my aunt.
That's awesome. And what are your plans for next year?
I'm not sure I'm going to school next year, but I'm studying biology, and I'm going to be on a pre-med track, hopefully incorporating music somehow.
We didn't talk about that part. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, Main East. Hi, everybody. I am very pleased to introduce to you Jada Byrd. So, Jada is a very well-known individual at Main East. She is involved as a leader in multiple aspects, very strong in the classroom, but has then also been a four-year member of orchestra. She has been a four-year leader in East Responsible Tech Club, which is presented at several elementaries and middle schools in both District 63 and 64. She's been a volleyball athlete for, since her ninth grade year. And she is a leader in our SOAR organization, Students Organized Against Racism. She's also a member of National Honor Society, Black Student Union, and Try and Music Honor Society. But I want to get to the point about the career exploration. And I think what I'm going to share with you is, again, that's sort of narrowing in terms of having some ideas about what I think I might want to do and then really honing in over these last three years. Joanna Pearson Fraser is our career coordinator for the Integrated Career Services at East, and she's worked with Jada and offered sort of a retrospective of sort of Jada's overall experience at East. So, Joanna said, "Jada's been involved in many activities since her ninth grade year. She began playing volleyball, made the freshman eighteen, learned about teamwork, sportsmanship, and felt a part of the Main East community. She also joined orchestra and Girl Scouts, and along with making Spanish honor roll as a ninth grader, she also raised $500 for the We Day movement, which went towards purchasing goats for her community in Nigeria. Sophomore year, Jada wanted to get closer to her roots and joined the Black Student Union to get a sense of belonging and wholeness. Outside of school, she joined the Delta Gems, which has held Jada accountable for high levels of academic success, proper goal setting, and has helped teach her compassion. Delta Gems has also helped Jada develop a plan for how to care for her community with a can-do attitude while emphasizing decision-making skills and planning to benefit her during her high school years and beyond. During her junior year, Jada did not shy away from responsibilities and became even more active in her community as she joined SOAR with focus on programming focused on microaggression, awareness, identification, and response. Jada was inducted into the National Honor Society and volunteered at Cook County Forest Preserve in terms of gardening. She felt allowed her time to center herself and relax as she gave back to her community. She also spent countless hours around Valentine's Day last year, making Valentine's Day cards for older adults living in a nearby retirement home. Jada was nominated for and attended the D-207 Fearless Girls Leadership Symposium and participated in a number of Medical and Education Career Conversations Guest Speaker Series. Since 2019, Jada's also been a babysitter, an experience that helped her realize she liked working with little kids. So, you know, that kind of helped her as a babysitter realize that she did enjoy working and was instrumental in realizing that I think I want to do something around this with life, but there are some options. So, last year during junior year, she enrolled in healthcare careers to explore a variety of occupations, also medical terminology, of course, not only to be exposed to body systems and vocabulary, but also to test herself to see if she can handle the rigor of medical coursework. One of our CTE teachers that had Jada in both those classes, Tess Love, said, "Jada's beyond her years of maturity and career readiness. As a student in my virtual healthcare's career class and medical terminology class, she was always engaged in the conversations regarding healthcare and her future career plans. Jada continually sought out opportunities to learn more about the medical field and make connections with healthcare professionals when they came in virtually to visit the class, literally really seeking them out above, like head and shoulders above any other students in the class." During this past summer, she participated in a paid education internship at Apollo Elementary in District 63 in their summer ESL program where she worked as a tutor, helping teach math, reading, and writing to second-grade multilingual learners. Despite having a positive experience in the classroom, she learned that she would prefer not to teach. So, also a very important part of the career experience is to figure out, maybe it's not for me. But she confirmed that she wanted to work with kids in the medical field as pediatrician. This year, Jada has taken early childhood development, anatomy and physiology, and AP Biology specifically to support her college plans. Additionally, she's currently a pharmacy tech at Walgreens, and she's been nominated participate, to participate in the Lutheran General Surgical Shadowing Program. Jada's been accepted at a number of colleges and has decided to continue her education studying the medical field with focus on pediatrics. Specifically kind of to Jada as the human, one of our English teachers and one of the SOAR co-sponsors, Eric Koval, has worked really closely with Jada. And he said, "Jada is an extremely personable, infectiously positive person whose energy brightens all spaces she enters. She's not afraid to speak her truth and stand up for herself and elective community around her. The impact she has as a born leader and truth-teller speaks volumes and strengthens the Main East community." Mika Yokum, who is one of our school counselors and the other co-SOR co-sponsor, said, "Jada is a force. She uses her voice to advocate for inclusion, justice, and the overall well-being of those around her. She's a natural leader with contagious passion, strong interpersonal skills. She takes risks and is reflective of both her choices and the experiences of others. Jada undoubtedly has a successful future ahead." And our orchestra teacher, Cassie Ruiz, offered this. She said, "Jada's always a bright spot in my day. She's smart, witty, funny, and a great leader. She's also very kind and supportive of her classmates and of me. She's a great violinist and is just an all-around fun, bright, and talented student." On personal note, I've gotten to know Jada these last couple of years and had a chance to work with her, and all of those things are absolutely the case. She is incredibly charismatic. She is, I think, has some wisdom beyond her years, and she's not afraid to speak up, and she's got a great sense of humor. I like working with her. So, I think we're all confident that the future holds great things for Jada. She's certainly done great things for our school. We wish her all the best. Congratulations.
My mom.
Great. And what's your plan next year?
Proudly to go to DePaul University and major in health science on a pre-med track.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
What about Main West? All right. So, I'm really excited to introduce Krista Sullivan tonight. Krista, can you come up? So, one funny thing, or I thought it was funny, that thing that Krista told me when we talked was that when she was in middle school, her father gave her a huge book on human nature. And she's read about half of it, but I think the very, how big it was, the heft of the book inspired her to study people, to learn what motivates them and how they respond to adversity. She went to a small school in middle school, and she said that sometimes being on the periphery, you don't always, you move to the periphery, but you don't always click with the people in the center. And that that's a great place to observe and to learn, and that's where she cultivated her skills as a compassionate observer. When she transferred to Main West at the start of her junior year, those were great skills to help her make a fantastic transition to our community, and they also helped her find her passion and her future calling. I would say that transferring as a junior is guaranteed to be difficult under any circumstances, but for Krista, that happened online. Her junior year began on the screen, and as she does, she found the upside and just rolled with it. She said there was less pressure and a little bit less noise, and she saw faces and names together and could take the time to learn them instead of having so much information thrown at once. And then one day in broadcasting, her new teacher Rebecca Orm mentioned that we needed people behind the camera to film the play, which was streamed online rather than performed live. And that was it. It's a completely new experience that led to a deeper interest and that eventually led to more classes, subsequent career experiences, and won this award. So, after directing streams of games and performances for WNTH, she applied to the District 207 Videography Internship Program supervised by our own Dan Colan, who speaks really highly about the quality of her work and the effort she puts into it. And from there, she had the experience that qualified her to apply for the City of Displays' part-time multimedia producer position, which is typically only held by adult professionals. So, she now gets paid to stream council meetings, create video content, and work directly with the head of media services at the City of Displays. So, her openness to new experiences, her hard work, her ability to learn quickly and then work independently made her a great example of how we hope every student can get it right while they're here. She's built a lot of really positive relationships in a short amount of time. She told me that she thrives off of people's energy, and she really enjoys the diverse energy of Main West, but she puts in a lot of positive energy herself, so it gets bounced back. Ms. Jacob said that Krista is a lovely individual who is kind, caring, and self-aware. She works hard in yoga and always communicates well. She goes out of her way for a student with special needs and speaks eloquently and with care when discussing sensitive topics. She is a joy to have in class. Mr. Faust shared that Krista is one of the most mature, accomplished students I've had in the last 10 years. She's incredibly responsible, articulate, and takes care to be a positive presence in class. I find her classroom insights to be the fuel for our discussions and higher-order thinking. I think she plays the role of an invisible hand who guides the class towards a deeper understanding and appreciation for government. What a treasure to have her in class. Mr. Fleming shared that Krista is always a model for her peers in terms of how she interacts with others. She is positive, engaging, and respectful of all of her classmates. She's also a model for what a true learner looks like. She always asks questions and is always assessing what she knows and does not know in order to learn more. Love this kid. Mr. Tivana enjoys exchanging cultural objects with Krista. Whether she is sharing with me a book of modern poetry or I am giving her an old copy of The New Yorker because she was interested in the topic, I am thrilled with Krista's capacity to seek and share knowledge. And finally, from Ms. Orm, who has been with Krista on this journey from day one, "Since starting at West last year, Krista has sought out opportunities to learn about media production in any way she could. She started by helping us film our spring musical and showed up with a giant plate of pancakes to welcome the film crew on one of our first warnings. This year, she volunteered to serve as the director for our quarter-one livestreams. She's also an intern for the City of Displays and volunteered to make our Veterans Day video. What I admire most about Krista is not only her go-getter personality, but the way she is driven by her empathy for those around her. When creating the Veterans Day video, she insisted that she manually subtitle her project so that all students in the school could participate. When filming our recent Poetry Out Loud program, she insisted on providing ample coverage of all the winners for the day. When leading a livestream, she recognizes the importance of making all team members feel like they are essential to the work that you're doing. I could talk about how awesome this kid is for hours. We will miss her leadership next year." So, my skills as an observer pale in comparison to Krista's, but it did not take long for me to see that she is both brave and kind. In her work with WNTH and with the internship, she really had to push herself out of her comfort zone, reach out and ask for things, organize times with teachers and sponsors. She devotes time to studying her peers, but I would recommend that they should study her. She's worked through some really challenging times and explicitly cultivates resilience and the wisdom that comes with overcoming fear. She's proud of having weathered some storms and carries the lessons she's learned into the adventure ahead, which will be in the city, where she can branch out and experience museums, festivals, art films, small venue shows. She's learned that sometimes you have to accept both the situation you've been handed and the feelings you have about it, and then move on. Keep yourself permission to feel what you feel, move through it, and then you can sort it out, she told me. It doesn't feel good, but anxiety itself isn't the whole of you." I was tempted to ask her to plan our next advisory lesson, but I held back because she's pretty busy. So, on behalf of the Main West staff, I am proud to present Krista Sullivan as our Honoree for 207 Best.
Krista, can you share who's here with you tonight?
Sure. My mother and my father came with me tonight.
And talk a little bit about your plans for next year.
Sure. So, next year, I'm planning on heading to DePaul University to major in communications and media and potentially minor in film. And after that, there's a lot of internships I'd like to explore, just kind of see where things take me.
Congratulations again to our District 207 Best from all schools. Now is the opportunity for you to step outside with your principals and your family, everyone who's here to celebrate with you, to take some pictures. You're welcome to join us, or you're welcome to go home and do that. Congratulations again.
Dr. Cook, if you're not leaving yet, I'm going to talk to that program. She's very grateful. I didn't know.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Good job. I'll show you where we go. Okay, we're going to do a public comments now. Eline Hernandez.
Mejo. Mejo.
Oh, Mejo.
I, do I just stand up to speak, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. I handed some folders out.
We'll make sure that everyone gets one from the table here.
My name is, my official name is Emiliano Hernandez. Everybody calls me Mejo. I'm a 1979 graduate of Main East High School. I'm also retired staff member of Main East High School.
A champion wrestler too, I believe.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, I've been the head coach of multiple sports along with wrestling at Main East High School. I even did one year at Main South. Couldn't wear the red shirt though. But I'm here tonight to kind of say thank you and for our girls' wrestling. I don't know if you guys know, this is our 50th anniversary of Title IX. And for us to kind of get this support was really important for the girls. You know, along with being Women's Month, this past month was the first time they held the IHSA State Wrestling Tournament for girls. And even though we've had numerous girls play with other organizations, this is our sixth year in existence, we're kind of rebuilding. But we have these two girls that are just tremendous. They've been part of the original group. And so, I included a poster in this showing our girls that started all of this. And believe me, I tried to chase them away as a head coach because coaching girls in wrestling is very difficult. I'm also, being a Main East graduate, I am also a big believer in Main East kids. So, these girls have been tremendous. I was going to read their thank you note to you guys, but I don't think I can handle it. So, you guys are going to have to read that yourself. It was a tremendous tournament. I wish you guys would have seen the energy that all the girls in this state provided. You know, for years, they've been following their brothers around at wrestling, and now they had their own. And to see their brothers and families come watch them truly was amazing. So, I just, I included a small poster of all our girls and a thank you note that they wrote, saying thank you for the support. We are now the only team really to have a girls' head wrestling coach. If you went down, you know, throughout the entire year, as you guys don't know or you should know, wrestling is a man's sport. And there are not many female coaches, and we're the first ones to add it. So, to be able to go down there with these girls and have a coach, a female coach with them was truly, you know, amazing. And multiple head coaches from around the state were asking us where we got one. Well, she's a Main East graduate, and she's been coaching the girls since her senior year of high school. So, thank you for that time and support. It really meant, as you could see, it meant a lot to the girls. I don't know if you guys have heard, we've had two girls play at the state tournament, a third and a sixth, and one of them just qualified to make Team Illinois to go to Indiana to wrestle in a dual meet representing Illinois, the first team ever. So, just tremendous things for these girls. So, I just wanted to say thank you for the support.
Thank you. Very proud of Main East. Main East, like in many, many things historically, the history, the record will show that, you know, they were early adopters and innovators in women's wrestling, so very proud of that. Thank you, Mejo, for all your continued work.
Thank you for coming here. We'll make sure everyone sees the documents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, update from our superintendent.
Okay, just very quickly, and I asked Dr. Cook to stay good too. I had the really good fortune a couple of weeks ago to speak at the National Super Tennis Conference about five times that week about the work that we're doing. And one of the featured items that people are really interested in is the career work that we're doing. And I asked Dr. Cook to stay only because she's really been with us from the very beginning, and I wanted her to hear what I was going to say tonight about this work. I think of, you know, Christine Sullivan, who was the West, who was new to us last year to junior. Part of what I think was really remarkable, knowing we bring them up with pandemic, we had set a goal to go actually drop our career experiences number down to 3,000, and instead what our team did is hit a number of 4,400. They were doing virtual internships before virtual internships were a thing. And so, I just, we have not just, we have such a good career team, you know, because we've been at this for a long time and had to solve a lot of these problems. And just since I've gotten back, I did about five presentations at the National Super Tennis Conference and finished up on Friday doing a keynote at the Illinois Career Tech Ed Association. I've had a half a dozen calls from people wanting to visit, wanting our teams to talk to their teams. I've got two or three schools in Illinois that want me to come out and talk to their teams about the work that we're doing. So, the presentations that we had tonight for our students, I think is just really the epitome of all of the things that we want to do as a district in terms of equity, in terms of really changing the trajectory of students' lives. So, I'm going to talk a little through a couple of things because there were some themes starting to emerge that I want the board to be aware of. First of all, this is a very quick graphic of just some of our business partners. When we started this journey about 10 years ago, we had about 70 business partners. Today, we're approaching 700. And there's some amazing business partners. You're going to hear about a couple of them in just a minute. The work that Sean Hiselp spearheaded this year with, along with the buildings and starting the advisory, that advisory meets every week, and that is a placeholder every week where we can do, in addition to equity and social-emotional work, we can also do a lot of work with the students' career advisement. We reimagine our consumer ed to be consumer ed and financial literacy. So, every student in this district is going to know, understand, be able to talk and apply return on investment for their own career pathway. So, we, last year, started a branding idea called My Plan, My Story to take up on Instagram. And the idea is that every student builds their own plan on story, but based on all of the rich experiences that you heard from our students this year. And their experiences meant to, as a student approaches their senior year, really crystallize what it is they want to do. If we can figure out why and what they want to do, the wear is much easier, and particularly the return on investment part of where. So, this is Taras Sewal, who happens to be a Ukrainian immigrant from...
And it just really opens their eyes to be downtown and be in those big office buildings and see what's possible if they stick with it.
Visiting this place kind of gave me a sense of, this is something that I could potentially do.
We have relationships with several small businesses in the community, and Sabella Grant has been one of those partners who's always willing to take our students.
We've had students intern from Maine South, Maine East, and most of them have come from Maine West. The message I want to send is, this is a good job, and they got a good future.
To have a paid internship in high school where you're getting experience, building your relationships all at the same time, that's amazing.
I started early September of 2016, worked there throughout high school, eventually I was doing payroll checks, making payments during payroll tax returns, simple 1040s for pair financial statements.
And they realized with Taras that they could trust him to do more and more and more, and they just kept giving him more and more because he proved that he could do it.
This graduation from high school was, was a non-event in his tenure period. He just came to work the next day.
Worked there throughout high school and still continue to work here throughout college. I was offered a scholarship at DePaul, they gave me 20,000 a year and plus back stuff. So, I ended up paying 8,000 a year. That sets me at 36,000 in student loan debt. In accounting specifically, what DePaul does, they offer you internship opportunities. One of the big four firms, PricewaterhouseCoopers. I applied. It was two 30-minute interviews. The next day, unexpectedly, the partner that interviewed me gives me a call. I'm working, so I'm not able to answer anyway. I listen to the voicemail, and, oh, congratulations, you went off for the internship. After you do, after you finish, they offer full-time jobs. Depends what firm you go to, but starting around 60,000 dollars a year. So, return on investment, will I still be able to pay off the student loans? I think I'd be able to pay them off in five years.
He's a superstar. That kid's going places. We're all gonna be working for him someday. I mean, I'm so proud of the kid. Like my All-Star, that really is.
So, there are, there were multiple designs within that story, and one of them is just the experiences that we've had with our business partners. I think going into this early on, I think there was skepticism that our business partners would even want to work with our high school kids. I think I remember a board member who was skeptical that they would even want to mess with it. But what Taras' story illustrates is actually a really, really common story. Our students end up being more often than not value adds for our businesses. And in fact, we've had many of our business partners who have been able to expand by virtue of just having our students work with it. The other thing that's an emerging trend, you heard Christine's story from Maine West tonight, you know, she's doing a paid internship. This is an increasing trend where our students are getting hired for paid internships while they're in high school. And the other thing that we're seeing is a lot of our students, when they're meeting our business partners, they're such value adds that they keep them on as employees through their college career, and that's increasingly happening. The other design element here that, well, there's multiples, but you heard Taras speak about, he knew exactly what my debt is, what my expected income is, and he talked about ROI. Now, here's the rest of the story. I'm always looking for the perfect story. This is as close to perfect as we've got, but it's not quite there yet. Here's why. Our amazing videographer, Dan Cohen, when he was doing Taras' interview, Dan talked to him about the concept of ROI. Now, Taras is a 2016 graduate, but moving forward, as our students all take this consumer ed and financial literacy, we're going to meet our goal to have every single student in this district know, understand, and be able to apply return on investment to their own story, to their own plan, to their own path, in the same way that you just heard Taras do it. So, that's, that's a really important one. I'm gonna show you one more story, and these are both Maine West graduates tonight, just, just by happenstance.
Internship at Saranello's in August 2021. We're mostly a dine-in and a dinner, like sophisticated Italian pizzeria, spaghetti, everything's from scratch, using flour and egg, really from scratch, nothing's from box.
Saranello's is a messy Italian restaurant and born about in 2011 out of the spirit of love of Italian food.
The first day I went in there, I was coming in at a busiest time, between four and five. It was so crowded, it was like loud, you know, I heard plates flashing.
The first party's at six o'clock, right?
Just that first day was like, oh my god, I don't know, I'm gonna do this.
It can be a little bit intimidating in front, you know, it's fast-paced, there's a lot of people, but once you understand the rhythm and the routine within the kitchen, it's a very comfortable setting. Coria started with chopping vegetables, gathering ingredients for the station. She's become more confident in her skills and responsibilities here in the restaurant, and just ability to be able to do a good job on this night.
During my interview with Coria, I quickly realized that not only did she have passion about culinary arts and food, but she was a step ahead of some of the candidates that I already interviewed. Lettuce Entertaining works with our students to place them at a restaurant based on their types of culinary interests and what restaurant environment they want to work in. She's done work at Maine West with her instructors to really start taking her passion into a skill set. So, Coria is doing a paid internship with Lettuce Entertaining. They found the value in paying these interns because of the skills that they're bringing in.
I took culinary one, culinary two, baking pastry, and gourmet. Once I got to freshman year doing culinary one and culinary two, I was like, yeah, this is something I want to proceed in.
Coria is a very passionate student, and that was displayed in the work that she did, whether it be the hand-dine activities of actually producing a product, or working with other individuals. She really evolved as a leader.
We have many culinary students here in the district, dual credit offering for students a step ahead with their college credit.
The only experience that I have besides Saranello's is actually here at the school. Saranello's is actually very valuable because knowing that I'm the youngest in my restaurant, I'm 70 years old, knowing that I can receive that, those feedbacks and those, you know, criteria, if this is what you're gonna see in the future, like this is what the future's gonna hold, I want to do this for real, Coria.
I like working with young kids because this is a young game. I mean, honestly, long hours, there's a lot of moving parts in the kitchen, and it just gives me the joy to see young people that are really passionate about learning how to cook.
I chose it early because I wanted to jump right into my career. I'm going to start Canada College January 10, 2022.
So, we will use these stories, they have a tremendous value internally. These stories within our advisory program will help our freshmen come in and have an idea, a mental model of what they're working toward. They actually help our teachers, not for nothing. Both of those videos featured teachers who were essential in the pathway of their students. That, that's, that's not, you know, that's not accidental. If we want our teachers really to understand each of their role as a tier-one support, helping, helping, you know, them see themselves in these stories is really important. The other thing that really comes into play, and it's evident in both of the stories, so think about Taras. Do you think it mattered to the Pricewaterhouse people to know that they were interviewing an intern who, when he was in high school, was running payroll for a business as an accountant? It sure did. And I think about that as a superintendent in terms of what are the things we want to do for our students to really prepare them to have an advantage in those situations? No one is even trying to do this at scale. Same thing with Coria. I think, I think the Lettuce Entertaining folks realized the high quality of the programming she had been in at Maine West High School, and that gave her a significant advantage. So, those are design elements when we think about bringing this to scale that are so important. And I think where we're at right now is we've grown, I think, to an important place, and the next probably five years aren't gonna be a time where we're gonna have to grow some more because we just, we don't know, we don't think 700 business partners is gonna be enough. We think, you know, it may be twice that, it may be three times that, and it's a big research study to try to find that out. The other thing, just in advisory this year, we asked some important questions of the students. I know what type of career I want to have. Seventy percent of our students responded favorably to that, and if you look at the chart, as we go up the grade level, it gets more and more positive. That's exactly how you want to see that. Now, I'm convinced that 70% is a really high number, and it's the first year that we've asked the questions, the first year we've had the advisory program. I think if we'd asked this question 10 years ago, that number would have been about 35% if that, and I think that 70% is, I won't say inflated, I would say it's accurate based on the foundational work that we've seen over the years that we've done. But we will continue to ask this question, in fact, we'll ask even more precise questions over the next few years, because what are we aiming for? We're aiming to get that 70 to 100. That's really where we want to go. We really want to go there, and that just shows we've got room to improve. And then I have a clear plan for my life after high school. Again, 61% responded favorably, and it goes up by grade level, exactly as we expect. We don't expect our freshmen to figure it out. In fact, we don't want to. We want our freshmen, our sophomores, our juniors to be exploring, just like you heard from the kids tonight. We want them trying things on. We want them going into something they think they want to do, only to find out, ah, not for me. A lot of our team know, I have used unfortunately accounting just as a, as a poster child for, you know, who hates accounting, it's people who go to school for four years and go to a Pricewaterhouse and figure, never having done an internship, and figure out, oh, it's not for me. Well, we want the experience that Taras had. We want them trying that out in high school to evoke that response. This, I added this just for the sake, after we can ask some questions, I'm gonna transition the, the concept of learning law. So, I kind of added this in just to show you, these are our reading numbers, and if you look at 2223, of course, these is real-time support, identifying support for students with some reading issues. Our numbers in 2122 were artificially low, and the reason for that is we weren't able to pull off the in-person testing at some of the elementary schools that we normally would have done. But you can see, they actually go probably to an all-time high next year. So, I'm gonna stop there. I just, Laura, thank you for staying. I'm so, so, so incredibly proud of, of the work that we're doing here. And when I get the, the chance to speak to others around the country about this work, it's, it's clear to me that, you know, we've got a model in place that a lot of people would aspire to try to get to, and we're already close to being done. We still have a lot of work to do, so Laura Cook can't go anywhere anytime soon.
Do you want to say anything, Laura? You don't have to, but I put you on the spot.
Well, the one thing that I've learned when I'm presenting to all these wonderful schools that you corral into listening to you, and then I have to go follow up, is that the biggest obstacle that they always have is the leadership from the top doesn't get it. And the unique part about District 207 is that our superintendent, all the administration and the board gets it, and that filtered down through the staff now and to our community even. So, I very much appreciate for myself, our students, on behalf of the staff and the community, thank you.
Well, and thank you for your decade of excellence and commitment. That's your line. Yes, Jen?
Just want to quick echo of what Dr. Wallace says. This is a very impressive and very important project that our district has been working on, and very proud to see the success. And since 10 years when they began this project, yes, I was very skeptical about such, and I even said it was like, business will not be doing it because it's like a babysitting for the such. But it most definitely has changed my mind, and the, the view that I see is most definitely has been a positive. I do see that we are, we are giving the students the opportunity, the experience in early stage from high school, and this is a perfect opportunity for students to really experience this so that they will not waste their time and money, because when, normally when we see it is when they go to college, they really do not know when they want to take the major, the career courses for maybe spending even in sophomore or junior years, too. So, by the time, you know, the kids spend their time and waste their money in a way and graduate later time. But when I see this, and having a career internship and having a life experience starting from high school so that they will have a more clear plan, clear vision, when they go to college, what they would like to do more accurately. So, I do see that very proudly. And I do remember, and Dr. Cook has been, when she started, I've been seeing it and all through that process, I'm very pleased to see that she's doing a wonderful job and wonderful work on this pioneer kind of programs and so on. And just finally, just I would like to quickly say that our district, most proudly, we are most definitely giving a opportunities to a young students in early year time. And I think that's critically, critically important that our district is giving us such, that opportunity so that students could able to see it, experience it, and they can move it to the right path, more clear plan in their future. So, just want to echo what Dr. Wallace says and congratulate Dr. Cook on doing such a fantastic, this program or projects throughout. And I'm looking forward to see this in the future, too, and with a very success.
Okay. Thank you again, thank you. Do we have updates? We're gonna move on to our next item. Do we have updates from any other board members, or? Nope? Okay. Let's do Policy Committee from February 22nd. Jen?
Yes, we did have a Policy Committee meeting on February 22nd. I called the meeting to order at 9:00 AM. We had a member, Ashley Alkuber, myself, and Carla Owens were there with others. There was no public comment, and we had a press policy review. And Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. George Daggers, read through the current policy revisions that IASB periodically makes to the press policy citizens. Committee discussion followed. Several policies will be future further reviewed at the Policy Committee meeting on March 15, coming 15. The following policies have been through first reading, and it will go for second reading and approval at the today's Board of Education meeting. That includes Policy 2-260 Uniform Reassessments Procedure, Policy 4-170 Safety, Policy 5-10 Equal Employment Opportunity and Minority Requirement, Policy 5-50 Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Insecurities, Tobacco's Cannabis Prohibition, Policy 5-90 Abused and Neglected Child Reporting, Policy 5-100 Staff Development Program, 5-150 Personal Records, 5-185 Family and Medical Leave Act, 5-200 Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal, 5-220 Substitute Teachers, Policy 6-210 Instructional Materials, and Policy 6-230 Library Media Programs, and Policy 6-260 Concerns About Kirkland's Instructional Materials and Programs. So, there was no further business committee for the committee, so we joined the Policy Committee meeting at 9:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. All right, construction update, Mary.
In your board packet is the February construction update, and it's the entire Main West show. So, we're finishing up B Wing Gym conversion. B Wing Gym will be turned into, on the first floor, the teacher workroom, and on the second floor, a student support center, including test makeup, behavior re-act, and a whole host of needs. And C Wing Gym will turn into the visualized classroom. C Wing Gym is slated to get completed in June so that we can spend the summer focusing on the rest of Main West. Entertaining, any questions that anybody has on the February construction update?
Any questions, Alex?
So there was no further business come after the committee, so we joined the Policy Committee meeting at 10:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. All right, construction update, Mary.
In your board packet is the February construction update, and it's the entire Maine West show. So we're finishing up Bay Wing Gym conversion. Bay Wing Gym will be turned into, on the first floor, the teacher workroom and on the second floor, a student support center, including test makeup, behavior re-act, and a whole host of news. And Sea Wing Gym will turn into the visual app classroom. Sea Wing Gym is slated to get completed in June so that we can spend the summer focusing on the rest of Maine West. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the February construction update.
Any questions, Paula? It's continually exciting to see the buildings continue to work, they're just beautiful. So thank you again, all of you, for your dedicated work and commitment to making those as optimal and the standard of excellence that District 207 was used to. All right, monthly status of finances, Mary.
Sure. In your board packet is the January financial report. On the expenditure side, we have some unfortunate trends in the operation and maintenance fund where water has not been our friend at Main East. Yeah, so we had a water main break that we had to deal with. We had water intrusion in a number of areas that we were dealing with that, mixed with some higher utility prices, has us trending closer to the budget than we would like to see. In fact, for the first time in a very, very long time, we may overspend that budget because of these, some of these unforeseen items. If you look on the equity side, you'll see that capital projects has negative equity, but we closed down the bonds in February. So that's part of the reasons we chose now to sell the bonds is we were running out of cash. So that will bring it back into a positive equity position. I'll entertain any questions anybody has on the January financial report.
Questions and comments? Construction services, Sean.
So there's a quick dual credit update there, just to alert the board. We've done a little bit more work, particularly in fine arts. Our MCC has done a fantastic job working with Oakton to now move us up to six possible credits with Oakton to be able to gain, be gained in their fine arts department. The reason that's important is because they have a direct admit program to Columbia College, which is a, a popular destination for many of our students who are interested in the fine arts. And so these credits will nest right into their, their Bachelor of Fine Arts program. So it's a nice kind of throughway for our kids who are going to take a stop at Oakton to grab some credits. And we're looking for other ways too that we can build the fine arts side of things with Oakton. So just an update there.
We do have other additional, your credit with the Oakton Community Challenge, right?
A bunch of. We have more than any other Oakton High School district, by far, actually. So, so a lot of the high school districts have been in Oakton. So that's New Trere, Niles, Evanston, McLean Brooks, and us. They're still all really chasing the eight, so we got ahead of the dual credit equation years ago.
I think this makes number 26.
Of course.
Fantastic. Okay, four-year requests.
Five this month, they've all either been responding to or they're in process.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to action items. Do I have a motion on a consent agenda, number seven, A through X?
Some.
Okay. Kilber.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Got a motion on number eight, which is on page three of the agenda, Board of Education Policies, second reading.
Some.
It's actually eight, A through M.
Some.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for George? This is again, second reading, so we spent quite a bit of time on this, not only here but in policy. Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to number nine, approval of boards and board of contracts. We're going to do this by groupings. Do I have a motion for nine, A, summer, A1 through five, summer projects?
Some.
Mary, do you?
So these summer projects were brought to the board first to pursue authorization in November to bid. They include some roofing replacements, some concrete work, the replacement of the track, including the awarding of an alternate for a GeoGrid product that will prevent the track from eating in the future. And then some crack filling and restriping of the parking lot, so we try to prolong our, our parking lot life. But we've noticed a number of potholes creeping up this winter, so winter has not been time to our parking lots. So I anticipate that summer of '23, we're probably going to see some parking lot replacement work.
Yes. Any questions, comments?
I would just say that the, I'm really happy to see the D, the Empower Health Wellness screening. I think that's really wonderful to be offering that to all of the employees.
We're only on.
Oh, it's under.
We're only on A, nine, A1 through five.
Oh, you're in the.
Yeah, so I'm going through groupings. That's okay, no problem. It's just, Mary and I agree that that's a good way to do it since it's a different topic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions on nine, A1 through five?
Just want to say, we've been seeing a very high increases on the materials, so prices in, in all the orders too, but have we seen any experience on price increasing changes or amendment regarding on this particular A2, A5?
So while the ropes were close to budget, I would anticipate, ropes is one of those areas where you order your materials, nine months later you receive your materials and they bill you at the current cost. So a lot of the contractors are building in a markup for future increases in their costs, particularly with roofing projects. The other projects, we're not seeing the same sort of increases, but I would say construction in general, those prices are on the uptick and we are very fortunate that we are at the end of our cycle for major projects.
And actually, the timing of how we did all of this, we have saved the district tremendous amount of money.
Because I have seen that there was a great price increase in the materials and labor costs, almost like 20, 30% up. Sometimes they're afraid to giving a proper prices because of money strafation.
Yes, yes. Okay. Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Before we move on, I do want to say to Dr. Cook, we love having you here, but by no means do we expect you to stay through the meeting. I just want to let you know that.
Yeah, you get out of here.
I'm just going to take that opportunity. Good night, everyone.
Thank you again.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion on nine, B, resolution of the joint purchasing cooperative?
So I move.
Okay. Mary?
The district is a member of a variety of joint purchasing cooperatives. A joint purchasing cooperative allows the district to tag on to their bids along those that has publicly been awarded, following the rules and the state and the like. So this is a cooperative which one of our vendors would like to give us pricing under, therefore, we're having a resolution to join that to get, to save some money on furniture that we're about to order.
Okay, any questions? Lee.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine, C1 through C10 Furniture Joint Purchasing Cooperative?
Some.
This represents the culmination probably of four years' worth of work where we piloted classroom furniture and piloted classroom furniture, and then we got hit by COVID and couldn't pilot anymore. So this represents the classroom, student desk chairs, as well as some of the teacher furniture that we've been purchasing. This by far represents the largest classroom furniture that we have made and probably is about 80% of the classrooms that we will furnish. We like to renovate the classroom and then the following year we give them the new furniture so that we're not moving and trying to store brand-new furniture.
And thank you for reaching out to the auction company, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're bummed that we're not interested.
Yeah. That was one of my favorite meetings when we had the opportunity to look at the different options as board members. Yes, so any other questions or comments? Okay. Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine, D, Empower Health Wellness Screening?
Some.
Okay, this, this has become our annual wellness screening. One of the differences we are doing this year is we're increasing the blood panel to include that A1C. It's an additional $10 to do that. And that blood sugar has been one of the highest trends in, in our employees. So we believe that adding the A1C, which will then show what their blood sugar is over a period of time, instead of just at the moment where their blood, they've been fasting, will provide better information to our employees. $10 is a very reasonable price to place for your A1C.
Yeah. I was looking for a note, since, sorry. So are we paying in the district per person?
So we pay per person.
Right, I read that.
Yes. And what we've done is, five, six years ago, we built it into the premium for the health insurance. So both the employees and the district pays into it all year long and then we take that fund and pay it for bonus.
Okay, and then my other question was, so how many employees are taking advantage?
Several hundred. So we've gone through the process, at one point we made it mandatory, now it is completely optional, but we've seen, we saw slighted last year, but we anticipate that we will have between 300 and 350 employees do it.
And are you bringing it to them?
Yes, we bring it, it is two days in each of the schools during the last week of school.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other comments, comments? Kilber.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on nine, E, CDW Aruba?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Sean?
So this is a renewal we have each year that we bring. This is, the Aruba system is what maintains our access points for wireless throughout the district. So it's just a, sort of the monitoring, it's like the monitoring of the pipeline of Wi-Fi. So this is, this is a reoccurring cost, but the contract is a, the price that we want to make sure we bring to the board each year.
How many years have we had it with this?
Quite a few now, I'm going to say probably about seven years or seven.
The whole time, yeah, okay. Okay, any questions, comments? Kilber.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion on number 10, Facility Rental and Labor?
So I move.
Okay. That's just for the Junior Warrior Basketball Program, I need anything to add to this? We've been doing this for years too. Okay. Any questions?
So that's $400 for core term or is it one per?
I think it's for the whole season.
Of course, it's a $400.
And the kids and families appreciate it sometimes.
Yes, we need them to get it.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to calendar items, just informational, number 11, are there any additions or changes to what's listed here? No? Okay, all right, are there any public comments? None at this time, we're going to move on, do I, do I have a motion, go into closed session for the purpose of review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance for dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters, insecurity procedures, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, if threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property. I actually have that memorized, but I do have a motion on that.
Some.
Second. Okay. Kilber.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Some.
Second.
Kilber.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on Personnel Action Items, 15, A through D as amended?
Some.
Lee.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Kilber.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on 16, Closed Session Minutes Semi-Annual Review?
So I move.
Second.
Kilber.
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Bussler.
Aye.
Do I have a motion on number 18A, Approval of Closed Session Minutes from the Regular Board of Education Meeting on February 7th, 2022?
Some.